I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Councilman Adam Hammond.
(inaudible) To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Gobbo.
Present.
I call him as president.
We will begin with announcements and presentations. Mary?
Good evening. I am Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, and it's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Westland. I just want to talk to you for just a few minutes. I hope many of you were able to make the senior dinner that Commissioner Anderson had. It was a wonderful affair, and it was just a nice time to meet and greet and to talk with the Commissioner. He's so thankful for all of you who did come out, for the stakeholders and those who volunteered their services as well. So hopefully, there'll be another one next year. Also, the coffee hours are over until next fall, September the 9th. They will begin, this fall I should say, September the 9th, they will begin. Now, the big boy will not be the location for the Westland Coffee Hour at 9:00 a.m. It will be at the library, the William Foss Library on Central City Parkway. That will be the new location for the coffee hours in Westland, which will convene on September the 9th. Also, if you don't have one already, I have the park schedule of all the events in the parks for Wayne County. And there's just so much to do because the park system is celebrating 100 years. So there's just so many things to do, so if you don't have one, I do have a few copies here today if anybody would need one. But there's a Fun Fest coming on July the 13th from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and it's at the Nankin Mills Park. And that's located on the other side of Heinz Drive at 33175 Ann Arbor Road, and that's in Westland. Also, is coming the Motown on the River, Wayne County Motown on the River. And that's Saturday, July the 27th, at the Elizabeth Park. That's 4461 Elizabeth Drive, and that's in Trenton. And of course, that's really gonna be nice, reminiscent of all the Motown days, which I'm sure many of you remember all of those days and all the music that came out of Detroit and surrounding areas. Detroit wasn't the only place that had folks that came out of it in the Motown sound. So there's much to do, so don't walk around this summer with nothing to do. I do have the park schedules with me today if anybody needs one. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. We'll move on to citizens' question or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Request from Lutheran High School, 33300 Cowan Row to conduct their annual homecoming parade Friday, September 27, 2019 at 5:30 p.m., starting at the back of the high school, proceeding south on Farmington, west onto Cowan, then turning right into their parking lot, and to also request police assistance to block traffic during the parade. Request from John Glenn High School, 36105 Marquette, to conduct their annual homecoming parade Friday, October 11, 2019 at 5:30 p.m., starting at Stottlemyre School, proceeding west on Marquette to John Glenn High School. Approval of purchase of one Ford F-150 truck for the fire department, amount $33,000. Approval of purchase of 40 Lenovo Notebook election laptop computers for the city clerk's office, amount $814 per unit, for a total cost of $32,560. Approval of purchase of software upgrade from Windows 7 to Windows 10 for seven election laptop computers, amount $132.66 per license, for a total cost of $928.62. Approval of renewal of annual mobile application subscription with C Click Fix. License will resume on July 30, 2019, and will end on July 29, 2020. Approval of professional services contract with alternative services concept for third-party administrator claims handling. Contract is for fiscal year 2019-2020 in the amount of $20,745. Approval of professional services agreement with NAIAS Security LLC for City Hall Security Guard Service. Contract is for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2019, ending June 30, 2020, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Approval of suburban mobility authority for regional transportation, otherwise known as SMART, contract to allow, rather to allocate, the city of Westland's municipal and community credits to Nankin Transit for the transportation services that it provides for senior citizen and disabled individuals in the community. Amounts are $82,726 in municipal credits and $129,350 in community credits, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the city. The last item, adopted on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the city of Westland to apply for a two-day liquor license from the state of Michigan to allow the sale of beer and wine at the annual Blues, Brews, and Barbecue event to be held August 2 and August 3, 2019. Moving to new business, item one. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held June 17, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gobbo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two. Approval of minutes of study session held June 17, 2019 at 5:30 p.m.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg is their support. Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gobbo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item three. Approval of minutes of study session held June 17, 2019 at 6 o'clock p.m.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg is their support. Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Abstained due to absence.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gobbo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item four. Request to go into closed study session immediately for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any, I'm sorry, Councilman Hammond. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gobbo.
Yes.
Chair calls a recess to go into closed session. Need a motion to return to, motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg to resume the meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item six. Approval of attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation as discussed in the closed study session, Teasley versus the city of Westland.
Motion by Councilman Johnson is their support, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven. Approval of attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation as discussed in the closed study session, Shingles versus city of Westland.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eight. Confirmation of appointment of Daniel Block to the local development finance authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 1, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Do I congratulate him?
Oh, Dan? Congratulations.
Like it or not. New business, item nine. Confirmation of appointment of Ramsey Algarib to the local development finance authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 1, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item ten. Confirmation of appointment of Brendan White to the local development finance authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 1, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Londo is their support, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eleven. Approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Johnson is their support. Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any, Councilwoman Green?
Yes, through the chair to Steve Smith. I have a question on page eight. Under sanitation, there's two expenditures, one for $12,600 and one for $10,998.16, both to Midwest sanitation. One description is flood damage from May 2019, and the other is truck rental. I don't recall seeing, getting an email or any notification to council that there was any type of emergency or any flood cleanup that we utilized Midwest sanitation for. So can you please detail what both of these expenditures are for?
Mr. Smith?
Sure, through the chair. The one with regards to the flood damage, those happened back in May. So as residents, if their basement flooded, they put the, out to the curb, the debris out to the curb. So there's a list of houses that we had to go to. And when there's, obviously, when there's a flood, it's in the essence. I mean, time is of the essence, you gotta get that picked up so it doesn't sit on the curb. They can't wait for their normal pickup to happen. So it was a special pickup at different times for different houses. So we do have a list of houses that were picked up for that. The other is for a truck rental. One of our refuse trucks was in an accident, no fault of the driver, but it did cause a lot of damage to it. So while that's in the repair shop getting fixed, it was necessary to rent a truck while that's getting fixed. So, and that's what that one was for.
Thank you, Steve. So my follow-up questions are relative to the truck rental. Was there a police report that confirmed that there was no fault on behalf of the driver? Because if there were, this cost would actually be the responsibility of the sanitation company. So do we have a copy of the police report to substantiate that the driver was not the cause before we give him $11,000 for just that one?
Through the chair, yes, we do have a police report for that accident, and the city's insurance company is actually covering the repairs of the truck for the city while it's in the shop. So yes, there was a police report.
Okay, well, due to the fact that council was not, we were not, if this occurred in May, it is now July 1st. We were not given any documentation or reports to advise us that the sanitation company, which we're already paying a pretty hefty cost to, that he accumulated almost $13,000 in additional services in the month of May. We were not made aware of that. We also were not provided with the list of homes that you said that you were in possession of, in addition to something to substantiate that the cause of the accident was not on or due to an error or fault of the driver. I think before we give this company almost $24,000, I would like council to at least be able to confirm that that is the case. Not to say that it's not, but it's two months after the, well, at least with this flood one, it's two months later, and we were not notified. So I make a motion that these two items be held and placed on the next payables report so that council can have the opportunity to at least review the information before we go ahead and approve it.
There's a motion on the floor to remove two items from the vouchers. Is there support? Is there support? Hearing no support, motion dies due to lack of support. We'll continue back with the original motion. Is there any other discussion on the vouchers? Any other discussion? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I'd like to say for the record that I'm not going to be in agreement to approve these invoices due to lack of proper, what I feel is proper, an advance notification. The city entered into a contract with this contractor to cover the cost of these trucks, but it, he would be obligated to expense this out of his pocket if they did cause it. So due to the lack of just confirmation that this is not a poor use of taxpayers' dollars without us having proper information before expending this, I'm not going to be in approval of the vouchers. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Gobbo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item, approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is William Asprey. This is a subject I brought up to the zoning board, I believe it was a couple months ago. There, I have several properties in the Norman district. One of my properties that addresses 2119 Emerson. The vacant lot to the north is owned by the city of Westland. What, city of Westland voted, it went to the zoning board appeals and it passed, the override passed. The law states that the adjacent property owners are supposed to be notified. I wasn't notified. I purchased the property in, it was July 2nd, yeah, July 2nd, meeting and everything was until late July, August. What Westland did is they took this vacant lot and they separated into two lots. Okay, cool, you wouldn't think it was a problem. Well, the problem is that it doesn't meet the local ordinances. There's not enough width, ooh, shit, sorry, there's not enough width there. I brought this up to the directors, the planning director, the building director, they both agreed with me. I brought this up to the meeting, and they said, well, that's why we didn't override, and it passed. Well, that's when I brought out my MCLs and my case laws. According to MCL 125.3883, override powers are only given if that zoning board had that part by 1943. Well, we all know Westland wasn't a city till 1966, and I had brought this up to the zoning board, and I said, so this shouldn't even come across your table. I was wanting a response. The zoning board was silent. The zoning board was silent until the city attorney at the end stated, told me to go hire an attorney, start a case downtown, and told me to stop, which is an OMA violation, of course, you know. Like I said, I have multiple case laws, I have multiple MCLs about this. And Westland is, currently, they're building the first house right now. I don't have a problem with the one house, because it should have been, it should only be one lot. The problem is that it's two separate lots, and unless the ordinance law changes, for the width at least, the depth is there and everything else is, if the width is changed, okay. But construction already got started. It's already two different parcels now. So Westland illegally split the slot into two. Now, well, I guess that's as much time I'm gonna have for this first one, I have another thing, but that can go in the next meeting. But that's my first thing. So I would like to, I guess, have this undone, because the zoning board illegally split the slot, there's two parcels, sir.
Is there anyone on my left?
Yeah, well, this is in regards to the vouchers, in regards to that Midwest sanitation. There was a lot of flood damage that happened in precinct 28, approximately two streets over from Courier. And I know that the city sent their crews in to knock on folks' doors and have them put their rubbish out. And it was a lot of rubbish flood damage material there. So I'm glad that they came and they, folks were not charged for the city picking up the flood damage materials. Also, the city even had Mr. Barrett come out with special crews to even help senior citizens get a lot of the stuff out of it, basically to set it on the street in ample time for the special pickups. So it was a good thing, that $12,000 was well spent in precinct 28. And also, through the chair, to councilperson Green, you had raised the question of council people retaliating against you. So I would just like you to provide some clarity to me and the citizens of Westland, just what is this retaliation and who's doing it to you?
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. To speak to the comments of the person who just came from the podium, Arthur Warren, I believe this is another attempt to waste the time of Westland citizens. This gentleman has been harassing me since before I started, or before I actually was elected. He continues to do so today. So I will not address his response as to retaliation, because this gentleman, in terms of his ethics and the extent that he's willing to go to not only write front-page newsletters lying on elected officials, he actually has continued to harass me, and I refuse to reduce myself to the level of someone who regularly lies and lacks the character for the seats that the mayor continues to put him in, although his actions are considered questionable to some. So I will not address that person. But in regards to what he said about Midwest sanitation, I would agree that any cleanup after a flood and any assistance that is given to our community is absolutely a wonderful thing. The issue that I took with it is that it is an additional $24,000 that we have given this one contractor outside of his contract. We've also given him above $300,000 in additional funding above the last contract due to the services that he said he wasn't being paid for, and then additional costs for rubbish removal. So that was another expense that council approved. He also returned to council and asked that we buy several trucks to replace those that were what he alleged, or what he stated was getting ready to break down. However, his testimony that he gave at the podium when I questioned him relative to those trucks having been inspected by an outside mechanic, they were never inspected. The trucks, his testimony went from needing to have multiple trucks replaced immediately due to them being on their last leg to converting to him wanting to keep those particular trucks as spares when I asked about whether he would relinquish the titles back to the city of Westland for the trucks that are now what he says inoperable, so that we can scrap those trucks and buy him new ones per the contract that the city entered into him to purchase these trucks as he needs, which was before I was on council. So his testimony changed from needing these replaced because they're no longer functional to he wants to keep them as spares, and then the additional hundreds of thousands of dollars we've already given him. I do not in any way feel that this is anything negative. I'm very grateful that this company was ready and willing to step up to clean up for, on behalf of our residents. But what I'm not in agreement with is a contractor sending the city bills based on their word alone, and that he has done that more than once. We have not received anything in terms of an invoice.
Councilwoman Green, can I, just a moment. The reason for a response is to address the item that was talked about, not about everything as it pertained to you. His comments about the sanitation were made in general. So you responded to Mr. Warren on the comments that were directed to you, and that should be the end of your comments in regards to that, not about everything else that's transpired at the meeting.
Well, I appreciate that, but respectfully, Mr. Warren is the person who made the comments relative to Midwest sanitation, and he also attempted to call me out and bait me into a, a back and forth with him yet again. So I wanted to clarify for the community that my motion to hold this, those particular items for a period of two weeks, which would allow them to end up back on the vouchers again at our next meeting, was just to provide council with proof, which we rarely, that rarely seems to be a requirement on occasion. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Return to citizens' comment. Is there anyone on my right?
I do have another one.
No, sorry, sir. No, sorry, sir.
In response to the flooding on the southeast Westland community, I am still cleaning up behind it. Been doing it for the last 30, 40, 50 years. You might pay me, but you haven't fixed the problem. Mr. Warren said that they came and cleaned up. Isn't that their job? Are we paying peoples to do things that's not their job? I am looking forward to, I've been here over 60 years and I seen some of you. Some of you, I was here before you was born. So let's be for real. We got a problem with flooded basements in southeast Westland and I have suffered through them and have received more rejections than I have progress. So I got a problem with anyone think that that's a good job. And I'm sure Mr. Warren can testify how he cleaned up my basement after the flooding. So he knows it's not a joke, it's a serious matter. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Yes.
Lori Wilson, Westland. I just have a question. If you have a council member, seated council member that has issues of their own, should they be checking on my taxes and where my tax money is going? Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Ray?
I just wanted to say hello and last time I just kind of sat back and just observed the city council and hopefully we don't go through this again because it doesn't look good when people get up and walk out of here after people talk about topics that are, you know, defensive. You know, everyone looks at everybody up on here, even on TV. I have had people come to me and asking me questions about it. They're telling me too, this does not look good. This is saying as a reminder, I'm not being, you know, I'm trying to think positively here and just things, hopefully things can work out better. Anyway, I'm not gonna harp on that. I'm gonna talk about the school board. And I'm gonna talk about, and I am proud of the students that stood up and talked about this scandal. I was just totally floored because what I mean by it, I talked to her myself, one-on-one, and talked about mental health. She was really supportive about that. But me going, and I wanted to go because, you know, I supported her into the school and I sat there while they were interviewing her. Sometimes the school boards need to do a better job and have backgrounds checked and done. And hopefully when this thing comes back, which I don't know, we'll have to wait and see. But the school board has a big responsibility too and I will continue going there. Because to me, I want to see kids get better and have a good, you know, sometimes. And the one thing that I did learn about the school board and the bottom line of it all is respect. We may not like what other people say sometimes, but the bottom line of it is respect. Because that's what they were talking about her, how people were getting up and, and, you know, kind of bashing her a little bit. But you know what? People make mistakes and sometimes they gotta learn from their mistakes and hopefully it was a mistake. But anyway, I'm the ambassador of DWMHA, which I am going out there and I'm going to be training State Farm, my insurance group about mental health, about the services that they, and I am proud of the other ones who are out there working, handing out hamplin', getting out the information to people in the Detroit area. I'm out here reaching out, I'm gonna try to reach out to the fire department, be talking to Mike about it and hopefully I want to get that thing started. I'm gonna try to reach out to Bob Wilkie and talk to him too and all the good things that I'm doing. And people are telling me I'm doing a good job out there and I will continue this and this is my passion. I care a lot what goes on out there because you know what? Mental health, I keep bringing this up, but it does help, you know, you just never know. Someone in your family can have it and a lot of times it's not talked about and it needs to be. And sometimes, you know, that's where the supports come in with person centered planning and different. I'm on that chair work group of it and I'm proud of it that it's lifting off the ground.
Right?
So I'm sorry. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm reaching out in the month of July to some, a couple of police departments too. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes.
Richard Graham from Westland and also with Move Westland Forward. Some items tonight. First, I thought that the corner of Merriman and Ann Arbor Trail was going to get some beautification from the owner who put up a storage area for shipping containers. Anyone know what is happening there? Second, EMS response times are out of control. Just over a week ago, my 92-year-old neighbor had a stroke. It took over 15 minutes for EMS to arrive. In fact, one of the EMS people tried to tell me while my neighbor is being loaded onto the stretcher, why it took so long. We have, we live less than one mile from the new fire station. I know there will be lots of reasons or excuses, but the depleted, but the continuous slow response times are causing our residents to possibly die. The department has been gutted by Mayor Wild and this is what we get. When we don't come out to vote and we vote for poor leaders who make poor decisions. When we have elected officials and unions not willing to speak up, this is what we get. Move Westland Forward has learned that Mayor Wild and the fire chief are possibly using fire administration staff to bolster EMS to improve response times. Are these people fully qualified as an EMT? Why are they replacing union jobs? Why the damage control? Third, regarding Council President Godbout's super low city hall rental cost. It is amazing how Mr. Godbout was so clueless about the cost of renting almost half a city hall for only $390 for five hours on a Saturday night. After all his years of experience, including the budget, he decided to be clueless about this. Again, we are made aware of this by a city employee. We are again made aware of Mr. Godbout having an event for his wife a few years ago, where former state Rep. Kozlowski attended. There is no record via FOIA for this time period on city or taxpayer property. The most recent budget for renting of city hall will miss by approximately 20%. This again is taxpayers' dollars. This money is being stolen from the taxpayers. Councilman Hart, you have discussed over and over again about being fiscally responsible regarding council travel. So what are you doing regarding this? Again, this is taxpayers' dollars being taken away and the budget is a big miss for this line item. Mayor Wild, but I guess he's not here again, so Deputy Mayor Ready. What are you doing since this has been exposed? Who are the people who approve this? Who are they? Are they still employed? If they are not employed, what is being done? Councilman Hart? Deputy Mayor Wild? Or I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Ready? Again, these are taxpayers' dollars being taken away. What was it? Okay, Deputy Mayor Ready? Okay, thank you. Be interested to see about taxpayers' dollars. Have a safe and fun 4th of July. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Yes.
Ta-don. This gentleman inspired me at the last meeting. So Robert's Rules of Order, reason a point of order. Point of order can be made at any time. That person has to think that the rule is being broken. They have to specifically state which rule is being broken. There is no debate. It doesn't need a second. And there is no discussion. And the chair rules final decision. Michigan laws 117.3, Home Rule Act. There's simply a small choice of what you can do when you become a city. Westland chose the strong mayoral form of government with a weak city council. The mayor is the CEO, the chief executive officer of this city. The council is a part-time elected body. To make comparisons of expenditures for anything, including travel or whatever, staff on the mayor's office and what a council member can do is comparing apples to grapes. I mean, it's not even close, it's not the same thing. I hate to tell you guys, I spent 16 years up there. We're part-time city council people. Our job is the legislative branch of this government. We do not have the same rights as the mayor and his office and staff, nor should we. Okay, one other thing. Past practices. Past practices in Black's Law, Black's Law Dictionary. Past practices are established practices sanctioned by common acceptance and use. Even if not included in any agreement, past practices are understood to be an integral part and are enforced in express terms. I've attended 90% of every council meeting for the last 20 years, either sitting up there or in the audience. 20 years. And I don't ever remember a single councilperson traveling out of state. Now, if you want to include DDA, TIFA, whatever, those are different comparisons. Those are not the same. Again, that's apples to oranges. Council members, to my knowledge, in the last 20 years have never traveled out of state for a seminar, conference, or educational purposes on the taxpayer dime. Okay, well, if you can bear with me, please.
Done. Thank you. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Sorry, go ahead.
Chester Cassidy of Westland. I'm not gonna argue with Mr. Graham over EMT or EMS response times. I have a lot of respect for EMS, especially Chief Redner, or Ready. Him and his crew 25 years ago saved my son's life. Getting to, you know, to a call is, you know, is tough. But on his website, he miraculously appeared with a Move Westland, Move Westland Forward t-shirt on and supposedly one of the EMT crews come up to try to explain to him why it took so long. Nah, the guys I know don't do that. The guys I know, if they are asked why it took so long, they would explain it. They just don't volunteer stuff like that. I've worked with fire departments, police departments, and my career with the Ford Motor Company and they all say the same thing. We are always criticized for our responses and sometimes for the jobs we do. You go to a garage fire, you never know what's in that garage. You go to my garage, hey, I've got, I'm a woodworker. I've got some stuff in there that, that would send the fire chief up, you know, up a pole someplace. So there's a lot of things that goes on that we, the citizens, really doesn't know about. And to take and criticize everybody across the board is not fair. Yes, there's room for improvement. There's always room for improvement. But just to take and just blanket everything, that's uncalled for. As, as a city, and I've said this last week, or, you know, at the last meeting, as a city, doggone it, we need to take a pull together and get the job done. If we want to be a good city, it's upon us and everybody in government to take and do and get the job done, then everybody's gonna be happy. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Yes.
Andrea Rittkowski, Westland, Michigan. I would also like to respond in regards to the EMS times, but I want to pull in some information that I don't think the average citizen may know. As the wife of a professional firefighter who serves in Hamtramck, I'm party to knowing some things about NFPA 1710, which is a minimum manning law. But we are manned as appropriately as our city currently. Thank you. But that our budget holds for and we are having to rely on safer grants to fulfill the rest of that manning. But the other challenge is, is that the lists that are being built to fulfill our public safety jobs in fire and police, those lists are not being filled with enough candidates. So that means there's a shortage of people qualified to do those jobs. And we can't change qualifications to match the people who want to do those jobs. We have to find the candidates to do that. So hopefully with things like our cadet program for fire and our PSA and explorers program for the police, that we'll be able to find the right candidates. But we also have to make sure that we aren't relying on those grants to fill those positions. We have to find the money to keep those people employed. Because there's not a person in any job that only wants to have job security for three years. And you can't ask somebody who's risking their lives to just be okay with three years. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Excuse me, just a second, there we go.
Thank you, Council President. We just want to wish all the residents a safe and happy 4th of July. Thanks.
Anything from the city attorney's office?
No comments.
Again, council comments, Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I would like to start by wishing everyone a happy and safe 4th of July. I would also like to inform the community that last week I attended a SimCOG meeting, which is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. And same as last year, I was blessed to be voted onto the regional review committee for the next fiscal year. And for those of you who are not aware, the regional review committee within SimCOG oversees the grants for this entire region. And so I'm very happy about that and I also, in addition to that, I want to announce that the City of Westland recently received a grant from SimCOG totaling $208,000 for trail enhancements and sidewalks. So that is going to be a very nice upgrade throughout our city. So, you know, definitely happy about that and thank you, a huge thank you goes out to our grant writer and her firm, Lisa Norrisini, who worked very hard to secure that grant. So I wanted to thank them. Also, in terms of one of the questions that was posed tonight at the podium, one of the residents here in Westland made a comment or posed a question in terms of if councilpeople who have personal matters, should they be questioning taxpayers' dollars? The answer to that question is yes. We are the body that is the checks and balances for the City of Westland. So when the items come before us, any expenditures that are added to our voucher, it is the responsibility of councilpeople to question. it is the responsibility of councilpeople to question or to have accurate information before approving these items. So, you know, again, to answer your question, that would be yes. And finally, through the chair to the council president, I had a Westland resident, Pam Martin, contacted me regarding fireworks that are supposed to take place in the city of Westland. I want to say on the Fourth of July, but I could be wrong. I spoke to Councilman Hersberg to see if he had any background on it. The resident expressed a concern or a request for additional detail relative to there being a fireworks presentation in the city at the, one of the halls. And there was nothing, because she asked me if I had information on it, which I do not, but it's apparently supposed to happen on the Fourth of July. And her concern was relative to there already being, on occasion, a shortage of available EMS and fire. So if a fireworks display is going to occur, and there was no permit pulled from the city or council did not, it was not added to our agenda for approval, she asked that I, you know, raise this question tonight for the sake of all the residents who I believe is, she, it's a, quite a few residents who have that concern relative to there being a, what would be considered a large fireworks display without council having prior knowledge or that we did not approve. So are you able to add any clarity to her question on behalf of the citizens? And that's all I have. Thank you.
In response to, that would probably be more of a legal question in regards to the fireworks. Fireworks are permitted on the Fourth of July. There is nothing in the law that determines the size of a fireworks display that's being conducted on the Fourth of July. So in regards to a group, in this case, the VFW, hosting an event at their place and having fireworks on the Fourth of July, as far as I know, based off of Michigan law, it's permissible, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Hammonds? Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. I will attempt to be brief. First thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Massburg, I don't know if I got the name correct. Like, was it William Massburg? I didn't collect your last name. Hasburg, okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't. I will talk to you right after this. I had some questions, too, some further questions. I'd like to actually look into that a little bit further with you. I was curious. To the city, lots of activities are coming up. Keep your eye open on the calendar. Of course, you know Blues Brews and Barbecue will grace the city once again in four weeks and a day. So that comes up. Plus, there's a lot of other things going on here. So I know July 27th is going to be pretty busy. I know, I think Mary McLendon, you said Wayne County's got some stuff going on July 27th as well. But there's a lot of things going on, a lot of activities here in the city. So keep your eye out for that. Fireworks were brought up. I'll always say, I enjoy fireworks, but for those of you who are setting them off at home, as I've said, and will always say, kind of be courteous, be safe, be smart. You know, just understand what you're doing and how you're doing it, and make sure you're sober when you're setting off explosives into the air. I'd appreciate it as well as everybody else would. Merriman and Ann Arbor Trail got brought up. Ironically, I had the same question not a week ago, and I brought it up to Mo in the building department, and, excuse me, the planning, and he's going to be looking at that, and he's already made contact with the property owner. And my disappointment with nothing being done in that corner yet has been communicated, and I'm expecting some feedback. With regards to the council travels policy, that was brought up again today. I really hoped it would go, this would die down. But good news is, we did have a study session before this meeting, and we did introduce a very comprehensive council travel policy in addition to a couple of other changes. And I got the feeling it was widely received with very, very minimal input on that particular item. So I think moving forward, that's going to be very good for the council. They covered my follow-up with fireworks. Yes, it is the VFW. It's my understanding, no permits required for consumer grade or whatever they're picking up fireworks, and it is on July 4th. And other than that, oh, with regards to the hall rental, there's another issue right there. I'll say it. No council member should be able to rent the hall for cheaper than anybody else. There should be no discounts for anyone, period whatsoever. So again, we're still talking about this. This needs to be fixed. And anybody who got a special rate on that should go ahead and pay the balance. And that's my personal opinion. And we need to make sure that we're looking into that. If that's not happening, it needs to not ever happen again. I've said before, we're held to a higher standard of care, at a higher state of privilege. And I believe, and I really stand behind that. With that, I'll wish everybody a very happy, safe Fourth of July, and I'll see you later. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. I'm going to start off tonight by congratulating Mr. Block, Mr. Elgreeb, and Mr. White, still in the audience with us, on your appointments to the local development finance authority. I think you guys all do a great job. And if there's anything we can do to help you out, please reach out to us. The Wayne Road cruise was last weekend, and it was absolutely incredible. I hope people got a chance to get out there and view the cars, the classic cars. They were all up and down Wayne Road. I think this is the best year ever. I'm not good with numbers as far as attendance figures, but way far and way above what we normally have out there on Wayne Road. So kudos to Don Nicholson, all the businesses that were involved, and all the residents that came out. And also the outdoor movie night. It looks like he said he had about 300 people out there at Westland Bowl, so seeing the Ghostbusters movie. I also want to thank the Westland Police Department for keeping the residents safe. There were, for the most part, we were safe out there, but there were a few knuckleheads, and the police department had to pull them over and give them a nice coupon that they won't appreciate. Channel 4 News has their promote, the, excuse me, Vote for the Best from WDIV Local 4 News. Our Westland Library is up for best library under the library category. Westland Bowl is up for under bowling alleys. Slice of the Eighties and Visi's Pizza are both up for the independent pizza companies. So you can cast a vote once per hour until July 14th. So I've been trying to remember in my head. As soon as I think about it, I go on immediately and vote for all four. So go on the Channel 4's website, click on Detroit.com, and just click on the Vote for the Best tab, and you can find all the categories. Also, last week, the 2019 Westland Chamber of Commerce and Westland Rotary Club held their annual awards ceremony at Joy Manor Banquet Hall and Conference Center. I had a chance to attend. And our first citizens in attendance tonight, Mr. Daniel Statchow, was awarded the First Citizen Award. The Business Persons of the Year Award was presented to Hillary and Garrett Stone from RE/MAX Cornerstone, so congratulations to them. And then Westland Rotary's Community Champion was awarded to Lou Toramina. So congratulations to all these winners. You're well-deserving. And then, just to talk a little bit about response times. Ironically, right after the awards ceremony, I was on my way home, and right on Avondale, I saw an older gentleman laying down on the street. He was cutting his grass. It was probably 85-degree weather. And there was multiple citizens around them, or around him, I should say. And one of them happened to be an off-duty police officer and administered CPR. I think the chief knows about this, and saved the guy's life. So thank God that he was there and was able to stabilize him until the EMS showed up. I don't know the status on that. I'm trying to find out who this gentleman is to get the appropriate award or recognition to him. I believe that same day, too, right on Grandview, there was a fire at a house, and a young man just happened to be driving by or walking by and smelled smoke, saw smoke, went to the door, started banging on the door as he's calling 911, heard pets in there, don't know if he broke in or what he did, but got in the house, got the pets out. So two heroic efforts in one day. So just want to, again, thank him as well. With that, just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July weekend. I'm leaving to go up north as soon as I get done with this, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks. I'd like to start by thanking Adam for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And I, too, wish everyone has a happy and safe Independence Day. And please remember that, based on our new fireworks ordinance, that fireworks are allowed during most of this week. They're allowed on the Fourth, and since the Friday is one of the days, they are allowed on the Fifth. They are not allowed on the Sixth or the Seventh, the Saturday and Sunday. So please be courteous to your neighbors and those, because people with pets and a lot of vets have issues with fireworks going off in the neighborhood. So I would ask everyone to please follow our ordinance in regards to the days and the hours of operation. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?